My name is Councilor Liu, I'm the councillor for Richmond Hill, I'm your councillor. And tonight I would like to... The purpose of tonight's meeting is, I received a lot of questions, concerns from my residents about the coronavirus, and because, to be honest with you, a lot of the questions is not the city of Richmond Hills jurisdiction. So, tonight I'm very happy that we have the mayor of Richmond Hill, Dave Barrow is here. Thank you for joining us, Mayor. And we have our MPP. Our MPP for Richmond Hill, Miss Daisy Way. And also, we have, from the school board, we have two representatives, we have our 1-3 representative Cindy Leeam. And also, the trustee board chair, we have Juanita here, thank you for joining us. So, without further ado, I would like to pass the mic to our guests. They will all speak first, a brief introduction, and then they will answer any questions you have. Okay?
But in which more deals kind of like a little bit higher than the average in my province? So that city had any measurements? Or send a message to the all the residents, all the households or this kind of thing?
It's, um, thank you. If you're right, I think that is what needs to happen, but I know, excuse me. And there is an organization now to invite people to be, come back into the community, come back to, you know, restaurants and, you know, where they would normally go and their, and their community with their family. And so there's a number of people that are trying to entice people by having, I'll say some prizes and things like that, that if you attend, you can, you know, have a chance to win a prize or whatever it may be. So there's a lot of organizations trying to go to the business. And this is one of the problems, going to the business owners, asking them if they contribute something to, you know, make this worthwhile. However, they've already spent two weeks not having any business. So it becomes a difficult thing to do, but I think we can make it happen. And Daisy and I were talking about that this morning. See if there's something that we can make it comfortable for people to come up again and to be a part of, you know, it doesn't have to be every weekend or anything, just something that they have that experience and realize that it appears to be not as frightful as it is. Things like that that will probably happen. I know there's been two or three. Mississauga has put one last night, I was in Mississauga. And there was some posters about that type of thing. Please try us. Live your life.
All right, thank you. The other question is the follow-up on Mr. Yagen. Because I just got the information, you know, the Chinese news reporter says the other, the other case, the other sixty-year-old male, you know, he didn't have symptoms for seventeen days. And so this is the first case like, you know, you know. So I'm, so my question is, you know, in terms of, you know, this kind of, you, the protocol or the measurement in the provincial level? Is there any like in place that if this kind of thing happened? You know, the government is saying maybe you just monitor all the same, you monitor the case, say you have fourteen days, so it's a period. But if they say seventeen days or maybe twenty-four days, because also we have the professor in China say, okay, but considering the case, maybe longer, maybe as twenty-four days instead of fourteen. So I'm wondering if the province has any like pain or something problems in place? As if this kind of case happened, you know, what the policies are going to do?
Yes, I cannot, like, all I can say is the province is really keeping on top of any changes. This coronavirus is something new to all of us and we are keeping on top of its development. So yes, we will be keeping on top of it. According at this time, the scientists or the specialists are saying fourteen days. But if this person or whoever it is that is still having some sort of things that we have to, that they start feeling, still feeling some concerns after twenty days, then we will, we might have to change a lot of things as we go. At this point, none of us have that for sure, for sure. But all we're saying is we will keep on top of everything, making sure we'll do our best. And we are not assuming, making any assumptions of things at this point. But at least fourteen days, we know that will be the safe side. And anybody, if they feel any symptoms by our means, immediately calling us, immediately calling us again. And then we will make sure. And the other thing too is, like, even the province also encourage people, if you really feel something, don't go to the hospital, don't go to ER. You might be spreading it to more people. Those people are already sick. They are really easily contract anything from, from us. So call, just call the health line. Call the, just call the, just call the line. Um, oh, I have it with me. I don't have it. Anyway, go, go to, onto the website, you have it all. Just call them. And even if you have to call 911, call 911. And then they will, when they come, they will come even masked and really geared up, well-equipped before they take you to the hospital. That is ensuring the spreading of the germs is not all over the place. So we, we are taking all the precautions. We're telling everybody, but there's only so much you can do. If we overdoing it to educate everybody, it will have even more concern and then over worrying. Right now, we're dealing with the over worrying. Just now, Mayor Barrow has already mentioned that, yes, on Wednesday, we should be doing a press conference to encourage everybody, just come back out, just come back out. If you are not sick, if you not have to quarantine, just come out life as usual, business as usual. We are doing a very good incentive for everybody. Continue to enjoy your Valentine's Day, continue to enjoy your family day and your March break. How? Anybody who spent more than thirty dollars on the business who has suffered from this, we are going to list it on the website. We're going to announce it on the, at the press conference. For thirty dollars they spent, they will be eligible for a lucky draw. We have two airline tickets. We have good red packet, also contributed by our city. So we have, soon as we share this, a lot of municipalities, the unions, the councils say, make sure we are in there. All the banks are in there. Some restaurants who suffered from this, they are in there. So basically, it's us working together as a team to support each other. And those who are quarantining, I will say, I will make sure I send that message back and see that they can inform, help the employer to give them this special leeway. And also, if we need to have somebody to buy food or get the children to school, whatever, let's work together as a team. The neighbors can help each other. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Maybe I'll add two cents to your quest, to the answer. Richmond Hill really has to rely on the York region for information and for anything we do. So you can go on our website, the Richmond Hill website. We always have the update of coronavirus. We, I think we have that since two weeks ago. So everything, the York region relate to us, we'll put it on our website to inform our residents. And I have to admit that on behalf of the residents, I understand your concern because you think that better safe than sorry. It's always like that. And we understand our community, we understand our Chinese community. It seems like, you know, the different levels of government, they don't understand what's happening in the Chinese community. And I can, I can understand there's a discrepancy between the residents' expectation of what the government should do and actually what the government is doing. So, and I think this is an important meeting that we all relate our concerns to our representative so that they can, you know, express our concern to, to, to different levels of government. You want to answer that, okay?
So also, for the York Region School Board, we also have a lot of update every single day. We have an update from public health, have an update from any other place. We will always update at the website as well. And then at the urgent situation, we will also send a letter to the family to make sure everyone knows the current situation. So if you don't have the information, don't know where you get the information, you can always contact me. So my, you know, contact information is listed in York Region School Board website. And then you can send me email or you can call me by phone so I can answer your questions, okay?
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, my name is Yanan. And first of all, thank you very much for coming out today, your spare time to answer to our concerns and questions. We really appreciate your time and Happy New Year, by the way. So I just want to tell you my feeling and I think this is also a feeling of emotional for the Chinese community. We are being, at least myself, I'm being tortured between two sides of stories. So when I look at the news in Canada, I see, okay, government keeps on telling us it's no risk, we have only three confirmed cases in Ontario, don't worry. So I say, okay, yeah, I get it. So don't worry, nothing to, nothing to worry about. But then when I look at the news in Wuhan, in China, the confirmed case, increasing number of confirmed cases and increasing number of deaths. And then when I look at the news about the cruise ship which are being trapped on the sea with increasing number of confirmed cases, I, I'm like, I don't know whether they are real. Are they far away? Are they coming to us? So I'm being very tortured between these two sides of story. So I'd like to know, what's your recommendation on how we should deal with this situation? Because we have volunteers from our community who spend their spare time, putting their money to try to help people from China. And they help not only people from Hubei province, but they help everybody from China to try to self-quarantine. So do you think this is overreacting? Or is this acting as a reasonable, responsible citizen? But if, if, if we are focusing on everybody from China, this is different from your, your notice on the public health. Because you only tell us to, to stay self-quarantined for the people coming from Hubei, not from China. So this is, there's a big discrepancy there. So are we overreacting or are we being responsible? And what's your suggestion on, maybe we should just disable only a volunteer team? Just back to normal, don't worry. And let the people self-quarantine based on their subconsciousness.
Well, you always have to be cautious, that's for sure, at any time. And I think would happen, you know, at the schools itself, not only on, on this, but some other, whatever child can get from another child's school passes to the family. And, you know, there's always that, so you always have to be cautious. I don't, I can't, I couldn't tell you not to do anything. And I can't tell you to, you know, lock yourself in your home either. But I think the point being, if, and you seem to have a good group of people that is gathering to, to deal with some of the issues that they're worrisome of. So I think there's always that opportunity for your question. And I often wonder when I see the news and I see the next cruise boat with people there, you know, just where did, where was its origin? You know, where was the, whatever the food that came onto the, onto the cruise boat? Where was that all coming from? And so like, I think, you know, I'm only one person. The fact that they must have an ability to determine where it might have started on that ship. And we can't imagine that someone, if someone with the, this came on the ship and not knowing, but I don't, you know, but I can't say, and this is one of the problems, you can't tell what's happened other than the result of what happened. That's what you know. But always be cautious. And I think, and you're doing very well, based on, you know, on what you're doing here, being here and understanding and dealing with the school board and make sure the school board is doing what it can to keep your kids healthy and hopefully that we can all keep each other healthy through the process. But I think you have to pay attention. And if you have a group of people that wants to monitor things, by all means, you know, that's something that you can always do and make you feel, so that would allow you to feel better that you're not the only one sitting at home. There are many other people that are with you and teams that you had with the numbers of, of questions and things like that. I think it's very important. It is important and it is scary, no question.
Okay, I have a question. My name is Crystal. I just want to explain to Ms. Barrow and Ms. Daisy why Chinese community, they don't want to go to like crowded area. Because, because what we see from the news in China, actually, their experts saying if you go to the crowded area, actually, you get a very high chance to get, get the virus. So, well, I, we totally understand, like, in here, in Richmond Hill in Canada, the space is very like big, it's not that crowded. But when we go to like supermarkets, like Chinese supermarkets, if we go to a very popular restaurant, Chinese restaurant, if we go to the school, those locations actually is, you can see the people's like density, right? It's the people that's very like crowded, crowded, yeah. Other than, other than those locations, I would say people like keep very safe distance, far, far away. So we are not worried about that. So that's why people try to keep safe distance from each other. That's why they don't go to like restaurant, like popular restaurants, don't go to the supermarkets. To like, if you go to grocery store to get twice a week, they might reduce it to once a week, like that. So that's why they're busy. I, I know, because I've been in those locations those weeks. So I understand, it definitely affect their business. But I think scared, like scaring, like we fear is the, is a basic instinct. That's like animal. If we don't know something is going to happen and we try to avoid it. So, so my question is, is there any ways that we can help like Chinese community to feel safe in those locations? Like school, especially like school?
For the school part, currently, like a lot of parents suggest is either student can be able to bring their own, you know, hand washer to the school and sanitize to school, okay? So these things, I already pass the information to the board. And then we do, you know, the student, but they want, the parents want the student to carry a small, you know, sanitizer, right? So, okay, so those are now, yeah, this can allow students can use their own sanitizer to wash their hands very frequently, yes.
I just, I don't know if you have been to the supermarket. Have you been to Walmart shoppers? Like those usually sell the travel size hand sanitizer? Because I've been to those stores. I can find any. If I'm a parent, I want to buy one for my kids, not sharing with others, just for my own kids. Why can't I want? So what can I do?
I think you have to protect yourself and your family.
We do have, sorry.
No, I'm just.
We're trying to reach all the schools. We send video, principal, ask for conclusions.
Okay, I don't know about the school, sorry.
Yeah, this is a school question, sorry.
Yeah, so the general big sanitizers, we don't provide at school because there are kids who have allergies to it and it has alcohol in it. So we don't know how, like, we can't run to the kids all the time. The best practice for kids to be safe is for them to just wash hands with soap and sneeze into their sleeves or into a tissue. Just the regular things that are provided to them. And also remember that this is also cold and flu season. Kids naturally do get sick during this time and they're spreading their germs everywhere. So just be cautious about things like that. Like, kids will get sick during this time in the normal circumstances, right? So it doesn't mean that they're contracting this virus. However, if your child is sick, please keep them home and make sure that they're fully recovered before you send them back to school. Please don't send your child with a mask because it gives them a false sense of security because their hands are still open, they're still touching their face and their eyes.
Yes, mask, because mask, we already discussed with all the parents. Mask is not practical. So we are not talking, we're not discussing about mask. But for the washing hands, you know, is, I, I, when I go to the school, I look at the washroom. The kids always go to the washroom in recess time and lunchtime. So they don't have space. They don't, they, they're in rush, they cannot wash their hands thoroughly.
So even though they get a chance to touch the water, they just quickly wash their hands. It's not thoroughly. So this is a good time for parents to actually instill some routines for hand washing. Like, it's a good teaching moment for the parents as well.
There's no time, sorry, there's no time, there's no space. It's not, even the parents teach the kids how to wash hands, there's no chance for the kids to wash their hands.
So normally when they're in classes, only when they go for recess, they come back or they have to go to the washroom, these are the times that they're touching everything, they need to absolutely wash their hands. If the kids are a little bit older, you could send their travel size sanitizer with them if they know how to use it appropriately because they'll be doing that on their own.
That's what, I would say, just in a very ideal like situation, yes. You can do that, but in reality, it's not that ideal.
Like regular cold and flu, we cannot really avoid ourselves from getting that because that just spreads through the school system.
Yeah, I understand, but this coronavirus is not similar even close to the flu.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying that regular cold and flu because the, we are like, as Barbara said and as we have said, the chances are very low. So we're trying everything we can to protect ourselves from that. And we are, whatever view is possible is also what we could do, right? And, and we can't do anything more than that. So just allowing your child to be, protect themselves and be safe, not touching their face all the time is one of the most important things that you can teach your child at this time, not to touch their face.
Yeah, I, sorry. Because I talked to several parents, when they, if they're, the kid over like grade four, like ten years old, I think the kids will understand. But the age under ten, even though the parents keep talking like every day, I don't think the kids, yeah, some kids might, some kids might not.
So that's just the reality, right? So younger kids may not get that. However, the schools are telling them more about this because they have seen some kids come in with masks. Kids have a lot of questions about that. Teachers have been talking to them, teachers have been talking to parents about this as well. And there are plenty of materials out there on the internet. Like, if you go to the York Region Public Health website, York Region School Board website, there are FAQs for parents to understand. It has been translated in many different languages so that people could actually understand what it says. And we're at very low risk. The reason why it is, like you said, like you watch the news, the Chinese news channel, so it's, and you still have relatives and families back home, so it's very close to you. So you feel that. It's like me coming from a war-torn country and every time I see war, I remember there's still people out there, right? So I, I'm very closely connected to that, just like that. This is happening basically in your backyard. So you're feeling it and your heightened anxiety is making you very worried. And like Daisy is saying, I would, I would say like, just take a step back and think about everything that you could do to safeguard yourself. And that's basically what we could really do for, for a virus because it's airborne. What can we do?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, can I just say one more thing? Because when Wuhan first started the coronavirus at the very beginning, the number actually is very, very low. But when they realized the number start jumping, everything is too late. That's, that's, at least I worry.
And, and we have been through H1N1, SARS and MERS and we are like really equipped to deal with things like this. And as you could see, that we have three cases so far and, and a very limited number of presumed cases, right? And we have to believe in whatever the government is doing. Like, everybody who's coming through the Pearson and ports, they're all being checked. And, and public health is keeping tabs on them and giving enough information. And people will take to some extent some personal responsibility. Like, if you are coming from Hubei, you want to quarantine yourself just in case. And just like any other cold and flu symptoms, the stronger you are, your body will fight this. So you have to believe in that, right? So you, you do have a natural immunity, like people build up. But the rest of them, you just have to make sure that you're staying healthy and safe.
Yeah, but the kids, I just worry the kids. They, their immune system is not as strong as adults.
Very true, and, and we understand. At, at the school board, we understand the anxiety of the parents. What we're trying to do is minimize the anxiety by not like giving into that, by letting them wear masks and things like that. So the little kids don't understand the level of anxiety that the parents are feeling, right? So they just panic and they get really scared and they have no understanding of that. So it's very important that adults and parents are calm and trying to help them through this. It's very important at this time.
So for the bigger hand, for the big size hand sanitizer, it's just an allergy, alcohol allergy problem?
We cannot allow anything that the public health doesn't let us. So at this time, the public health has deemed it not necessary. So we won't provide that at this time. We have to take our cues from public health because like everybody have a higher system that they look up to and we look up to the province for any directions from them.
I just want to say one thing is, trust us, we are a group together. Your concern is just as big as how I see them. That the province also see that as well. It's not just saying that, thinking that they just take it lightly. We are really on top of it, but we also care. And I am glad it's because I'm a Chinese and I can understand your concern very well. And I can reflect, and I did voice it out to the minister as well. And they understand it. They reassure us that don't get panicked because it's not helpful. But at the same time, knowing that they care, they are really on top of it, just like your concerns are. So just trusted with them and just relax. Maybe that is making things better that way. That's all I can say. But we really, it's not just you have a concern and we just hold our hands and not worry about it. We really work on it together with you. We are in it together. Thanks.
You saw these kids come back recently, travel to China, or Wuhan, right? So because we all know the, the public health already, I think, this cannot, your policy. So what's the bottom of your policy?
Yes, so whatever the public health is implementing, we would automatically adopt that. So whatever the public health is saying will be our policy as well. However, as you can see, as a school board, one of the things that mandated us is the Education Act. And we cannot do anything that's different from that. So we cannot exclude a child when the child is not safe just because they're coming from somewhere. So now that the York Region Public Health has said that Hubei province tried, like, they're saying should, which means that you kind of do it on your own to quarantine yourself. But if we know that a child has come from there, we would definitely have a conversation with the parents to educate them on the information that's available for them.
So it's a bit confusing. So is it required? It's like, oh, they have, the boarding is just returning. So there is, for example, if a kid just came back from Hubei or Wuhan, so, so is he still, are you here?
So my understanding is nobody is coming or going into Wuhan at this moment, right? So that's why they're only talking about Hubei because that's the port that's open for people to come through. So nobody can, the planes that took the passengers, they came from Wuhan from special permission. That's why they quarantined right away. Hubei, yeah. So again, it's up to the people who are coming to quarantine themselves because it's suggested, it's saying you should, it's not saying you must, right? So because it's saying that we can, there's no mechanism for us to enforce anything like that. We cannot force somebody to do that. It would be against their human rights to come and participate in education. So we cannot do that. However, we will be strongly advising them, the parents, to suggest that they do that because now it's recommended they do that.